All right, I just saw that we're live. All right, hi, everybody. I'm at my remote office tonight. And I'll call a meeting to order at 6:30. Very quickly, I'll read the governor's intro. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town at South Row's website at www.southrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on South Row's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. So again, welcome, everybody. We are at four of five tonight. Mr. Shea indicated, and I guess Ms. Hale said he's on a, he's on a probably an admitted students college tour. So good for him. Good way to spend some time. Our first item is public comment. I see we have five attendees. I don't see any comment, so I'm moving to reports. The chairman's report for tonight is nothing. So members' reports. South Union RFP selection process. Ms. Malinowski, is that you?
That's me. So I just wanted to talk about the timeline and the process for the RFP selection. So I did talk to Ms. Esposito earlier today, and she confirmed that the proposals are due by May 5. So I would like to propose that we put together Ms. Esposito and preferably somebody not from the Board of Selectmen to work with her on the scale and rating the proposals that come in. And the reason for that is because then those proposals will become, come before our board, and I just think it's cleaner if one of us isn't involved. So I just kind of wanted to get the, this board's thoughts on that.
I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. Lisa, go to you first.
So I agree, it makes perfect sense. I would recommend, based on the work that's been done, that it be someone from the Capitol Committee, myself excluded, obviously. But I think that makes a lot of sense. They've done a lot of the legwork and the rep to speed on South Union. So I would suggest that. Thank you.
Fine with me.
Great. So that, if we can kick it over to Capitol to assign someone, and then between May 6 and May 10 is probably when we would look to have those reviewed. We don't have a meeting on May 11, and I don't know that we want to wait until May 18 to discuss. What, because town meeting's May 22. So I don't know if we want to plan on scheduling a quick meeting. I know we can't meet on May 11 because it's the town election. But if there's another time that we would want to meet that week, just so we can give them a deadline on the proposals.
Well, in some respects, it might make sense to me, May 10. Again, we always knew there was going to be a crunch here.
Yeah.
So it strikes me, we either meet right before or right after the election. It doesn't, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me, except, except by going after the election, we add an additional two days, that's all. I'm, I am.
And we have a new member who, who will.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, no, I understand. You know, May 10, we've got five people who have been involved throughout. You know, May, May 12, we've got four people who have been involved throughout, you know, which is, which is the chicken, which is the egg? What makes the most sense?
I would be in favor, Marty, of the 10th. And if we do our meeting at the normal time, and if it's something that Capitol needs to meet and discuss, typically Capitol meets on Mondays at 7:30. So if there's anything that needs to carry over, you know, we're not going to mess up any schedules at all.
Well, why don't we tentatively think about, we don't have to set it in stone now, but why don't we think about May 10? I'd also like to get Mr. Shea's thoughts. He may, he may feel strongly one way or the other, but we should at least give him the opportunity to weigh in.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that all, Chelsea?
That's it.
Any other member reports? All right.
Marty, if I could, sorry, if I could just do one quick one?
Sure.
So I wanted to update the board. I know we had talked a little bit about, Mark had talked about the vaccine clinic last week, and I just wanted to say how well done it was and how well it was run. I had the opportunity to volunteer, and it was great to see how well it was put together. I don't think there was a line that waited more than a minute, which is pretty incredible with the volume of people from across the state that were coming in. So kudos to everyone involved in making this happen, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything specific tonight. Everything I've been working on is under other matters tonight.
Okay, so on to item four, consent agenda. And Mark, you said one item is coming off. Is that D?
Yeah, item D, I'd ask that that be tabled for now, please.
Okay, so I will move that we approve item A through C on the consent agenda. Are there any holes to that?
A.
Is that also for you, Chelsea?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, nothing for B or C? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, by Ms. Malinowski, discussion none, Ms. Braccio.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski?
Hi.
Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
Mr. Healy is I. All right, going to item four, A. Sam, what did you have to say about it?
One tiny typo, line 146, bringing instead of brinning.
Okay. And Chelsea?
Line 32, I think we should call it a public forum and not a public hearing on the downtown district bylaw.
Okay.
Category, and then on line 45, just update the word hearing to forum.
Okay, with those three edit slash corrections, I will move to approve item four, A. The minutes from March 30, 2021.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stivers. I heard you first. Discussion none, Ms. Braccio.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski?
Hi.
Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
Mr. Healy is I. That's unanimous. So on to other matters. And Mr. Purple, do you want to update us on where we are?
Sure. I had sent something out late to the board this afternoon. I apologize for the lateness of it, but trying to give you the most updated information so that you had it in front of you for this evening. And we'll, we'll update the website with that information as soon as possible. You have with, you know, you were also sent out an Excel sheet, which is just kind of the cheat sheet that I use to try to, to try to, to keep track of the, of the warrant articles and then set up motions, quantum of votes, recommendations, and then town meeting action. And what I've done is, so the chair had me send out a list or send out an email to, to all the members earlier last week, and it just to try to figure out which articles you'd like to discuss this evening and which articles that you have no holds on and, you know, would feel comfortable approving. I think the chair's intention was to do an omnibus vote for those articles without need for discussion. And that was done. Of the 39 articles, I believe that there are 20. I'd have to do a count because I know that a couple were pulled off today. I believe 20 articles for the board to discuss, and they are noted on the sheet. And I believe that, you know, we'll go through those and, and then positions can be taken. If there's anything tonight that the board decides not to take a position on, I suggest that it simply be listed as at town meeting. Advisory has done that in a couple of instances because some articles, like the zoning articles, are still in discussion at planning board. And things, things like that. I will note article 38, which is the citizen petition, the plastics ban brought forward by Mr. Wyshon, several other people. Town council had provided a pathway to have that article removed. Mr. Wyshon had requested to have it removed, prepare the information for Mr. Wyshon to go out and seek the signatures of the other 13 people who had signed off on that petition. Those signatures have not been removed, and so the understanding was if we didn't have it back in time, then that article will stay on the warrant when you close it, when you, I'm sorry, when you sign the final version tonight. And then Mr. Wyshon can then take that up when it comes to the floor at town meeting on May 22.
All right, Mark, I'm looking at the Excel sheet. What, what's the easiest way to identify? You know, I, it sounds like everybody sent in a list of items that they wanted to talk about, and that what's the easiest way to identify the, the articles that don't fall into that category?
Uh, the easiest way, so the articles, I mean, I can, I can read a list of those articles that don't fall that basically that, that members have not identified for further discussion.
All right, well, I'm comfortable with Mr. Purple listing those off. We'll listen. And if, if he get, if he mentions one that, that one or more of us want to discuss, either didn't include on the list or want to include now. Well, Mark, why don't you do that, and then we'll, we'll see where we are. Okay?
Sure. Okay. Article number one, hearing committee reports. Article three, annual borrowing authorization. Article four, annual authorization of contracts in excess of three years. Article five, salary administration plan. Article 10, capital budget non-borrowing. Article 11, capital budget lease borrowing. Article 12, insurance deductible account. Article 13, capital maintenance fund. Article 15, CPA administrative. Article 16, CPA, the Burnett House bond. Article 17, CPA library facade bond. Article 18, CPA Kalander Field project. Article 21, flag school assessment, CPA. Article 22, CPA, the trail on DCR land. Article 24, adopting the MGL to increase the property exemptions. Article 25, the bylaw to increase the qualification period for appointments. Article 26, bylaw for availability of town report and the warrant. Article 27, adopting the MGL for the Saturday office hours. Article 28, adopting the MGL for speed limit in thickly settled areas. Article 29, adopting the MGL to designate safety zones. Article 31, the bylaw for the South Borough Public Accessibility Committee. Article 33, the bylaw for the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Those are the articles that no one has held.
Okay, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. Does everybody have that same count?
Yep.
Okay. Now, I am assuming that if, if those weren't held, that those are, and maybe I'm wrong, that those are articles that no one has an issue with in terms of voting in, to support. Am I right about that? Okay. All right. Then I will make the omnibus motion for those items that were listed, the 22 articles listed by Mr. Purple, that the Board of Selectmen vote to support those articles at the 2021 annual town meeting.
Second.
By Ms. Braccio, discussion. None, Ms. Braccio.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski?
Hi.
Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
Mr. Healy is I. All right, now, we just have to march through the others.
Are we done?
I know. It feels like there's some finality there, but there's not. The first one, though, will be, everybody's fine with that. I mean, there's no disco chronology chronologically. I mean, I don't think there's any reason not to. All right, the first one is just, is, is, item number two is the acceptance of pilot payments. Nothing, we're not ready to vote on that yet, and I don't think we probably will be ready until annual town meeting, but I think everybody's aware that I've been having intermittent meetings with representatives from St. Mark's and the Fay School. And reported on them last time, will report again this time. Those meetings have gone well. I think there is going to be favorable information on the, on the donation front. The, the pilot is a bit of a misnomer. I think, Mr. Stivers, as you found out last, last week at a meeting you attended, there really is no such thing as payment in lieu of taxes. There are voluntary donations by nonprofits that they can choose or choose not to make. And, and as I said, I'm hopeful, I've been optimistic from the outset that the sort of change in tone, the change in focus and discussion with the nonprofits was going to yield better results than the adversarial relationship that, that seemed to have existed, at least in some part in the past, and I remain hopeful of that. So just, that was just a quick update on that. And I think otherwise, we're ready to move on to, yeah, Mark?
Just to, just to make sure that everybody understands, this article is not necessarily to accept a specific amount. This is simply to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any monies received, you know, in, in the fashion of pilot payments.
So we can do that without, without specific amounts, isn't it, Mark?
Correct. This is, this is basically just giving the Selectmen the authorization, the blanket authorization to accept it. It's an annual article that's, that's put on here every year and simply allows you to accept donations from tax exempt organizations and determine the disposition of those funds.
Okay, well, then I'll move that the Board of Selectmen support article two.
Second.
Discussion none?
Just one question, Marty. So depending on where that ends up, do you plan on giving some form of update to town meeting if there's anything to update on the discussions you've been having?
Absolutely. I mean, hopefully, I mean, I've made it pretty clear to, to, to both St. Mark's and Fay that, that, that there's a, there's an hourglass, it's tipped upside down, that runs out on May 22. So they're aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
So that was additional discussion. Anymore? No, Ms. Braccio?
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski? Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
Mr. Healy is I, and we're on to, that's approved unanimously. We're on to item, article six, which is adjustments to the FY 2021 budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the board vote this at town meeting. At this point, we do not have any. And, you know, we may be aware of some as we get closer to town meeting. In all likelihood, this may be simply indefinitely postponed, so I would suggest at town meeting.
Okay. Any disagreement with that approach? All right, then we will not be taking a vote on item six tonight. Item seven is the 2022 budget. I suspect all of us held that, and, you know, we, we were bombarded, maybe is too strong a word, but peppered at least with, with information over the weekend and throughout the day. Where do we stand, Mr. Purple?
So I would ask, so Mr. Ballantyne is in the audience. Vanessa, I believe he's Paul. Based on the computer that he's using.
He's gone undercover for the budget discussion.
Really? I remember a time when he identified himself as Brian Ballantyne.
Yeah, yeah. Although it's not a bad time of year to have an alias either to, you know, when it comes to, when it comes to the budgets. From, hi, Paul. From, from my perspective on the budget, Brian can speak to some of the small tweaks that, that I think that we've made to the budget. You know, we've got some additional information from the state that, you know, we thought was worthy just to make a, you know, a couple of small tweaks. The only two items that I'm aware of, advisory is going to be voting a small change of a little bit more than $1,000 to their budget at their meeting this evening. And I believe that in Board of Health met earlier this afternoon, they made some changes to their budget. I don't have anything official yet. I, I think I would offer to either Ms. Malinowski, Ms. Braccio, or Mr. Stivers, who could speak to it, who were watching the meeting and can, can talk about this. But I know there was some proposals on the table, I think, that were being shepherded by Ms. Cook. And my understanding is those didn't come to fruition. So if, if somebody else wanted to speak to this, that's fine. I, I don't have, the bottom line is, I don't have a new number yet from Board of Health. And as we know, as an elected board, it's their number that goes to town meeting. So I don't have that information yet. So Brian, I don't know whether you, you want to speak to some of the small changes that were made to the, to the, to the budget over the past couple of days.
Mark, before we get to Brian, though, just, just, I mean, the Board of Health can't hold a warrant hostage.
They can't. You have, you're, you're carrying in the budget right now the last number that they voted that we have. Mr. Litt just put up a number in the chat, and I, I understand that. Unfortunately, you know, that number should be coming from the Board of Health.
Right. And, and that's my understanding also, and, and also it should come from the Board of Health. And I think they're planning to get to you ASAP here, so.
Okay. All right, well, with that, why don't we go to, to, to Brian, just to update us on the last minute tidbits that came in?
Sure, and just one update. I think we did hear that the Board of Health, the advisory just, because I'm kind of listening to advisory too, and they just voted down, the Board of Health voted against their budget due to the admin staff that they will not bend on. So so that, I think, was unanimous from advisory, but I'm sure you'll hear about that more. There's just small, small tweaks we did in the budget, the ways and means committee released some, some more updated local aid. It wasn't a huge change. I'm trying to remember how much it was. It was to the good, but it was.
About 20.
How much? I'm sorry?
About, I think about $20,000. It wasn't much on the revenue side. They really dropped down the charges on the backside, which is where I think we gained about $19,000. It's only about $1,000, $1,500, you know, on the front side.
Yeah, I was going to say 19. And yeah, another tweak that kind of offset that was the aerial truck money ended last year, and I still had that in the budget, so as a revenue. So obviously, unfortunately, the aerial truck came to its, came to its conclusion. So that was a, that was a great little 10-year thing that we had going. With MIS or IT, the, that $5,000 for server work was over a period of years, not one year. So it was actually over five years. So we eliminated $4,000 from the IT budget and kept $1,000 in that line. I don't know if there's been anything else since, since you last got updated. I think, I think actually that's it. We're, we're now 99% of the way there.
Well, less important than from when the last, last we were updated, from what is in the warrant. Does what you just described is, did all of that, did, did you or Mark have enough time to get it into the warrant?
Yes, everything's updated in the warrant. Obviously, again, with the exception of what happens with Board of Health. But again, that'll go in as they last voted, so that's, that's that.
Okay. All right, before we get to how to deal with wording the motion, given where we are with Board of Health, any items that you want to raise or comments? I'll go to Ms. Malinowski first. I've been starting with Ms. Braccio a couple of times.
Yep. So Brian, can you just refresh my memory on where we're at with the IT budget and how we've allocated those funds?
So the IT budget. Oh, I gotta remember now how we did this. We obviously have Jason's, Jason, the new IT director's salary in there. We put the funds in the, I believe it was in the salary area for the part-time amounts.
Yes, it was now, yeah, it was another $95,000 for a second full-time employee.
That was the 95,000. Whether that comes to fruition or it's.
We put that in part-time salaries? Is that what you said?
I think it's actually technically.
It's a full-time?
Yeah.
So I feel very strongly that we need to fix our cybersecurity issue, and I want to make sure that we have the appropriate funds to do that. And I'm not convinced yet that hiring a second person is, is really filling the biggest risk that we have right now. So I would be more in favor of keeping, keeping the higher, keeping the number that it's at overall. But having our new manager work over the next several weeks on what options he has to mitigate the risks. And I don't want to, I don't want to put him in a position where he doesn't have the ability to fix our largest risk. And I understand, you know, the, the challenge with having a backup for him. I just, I, I really want to get our cybersecurity resolved, and I, I'm not there that a second person's going to solve that. So I, I do want to give him the opportunity to, to do what he needs to do. So I, I would rather see his progress and understand from him as he works in collaboration with other boards and committees on what needs to be done.
Mark, can I just interject a quick question? Mark, the number, or Brian, the number, the bottom line number that's in, it's, it's simply the 155 line, correct? For IT, that's what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, is 473, 285. My understanding is that regardless of which direction we went, whether it was a second full-time person or we went more the, what Ms. Malinowski just described, focusing it from a contractual standpoint, that there is sufficient funding in the budget to cover either approach. Am I right about that?
That was the intent.
Okay.
Yes.
Question.
Mark, you, you agree with that as well?
Yeah, I, I think, like I said, I, you know, I met with the, with the new IT manager today. And, you know, I, I think the, the goal is to try to give him as much latitude to try to put this together in the way that he feels best. I mean, he's, you know, he's, he's had, you know, eight to 10 hours under his belt today. That's it. You know, he's still trying to figure out where his seat lands. You know, I'm not sure he got to it today. And I think that if this budget goes forward as is, he's got the resources in there. I agree with Ms. Malinowski. It may not be in the right place, but I think the resources are in there. If we can figure that out between now and May 22, you know, we can prepare an amendment to address it. And if we feel that it's, that we're comfortable with this moving forward, then it's something that we could always permanently address in October. The board is committed to having a special town meeting. You know, so it, it depends on how quickly, you know, we're able to pull something together. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to rush this. I think we're seeing, we see the pitfalls of trying to rush into things too quickly. So I, I think, I think that's where we stand.
Mark?
Um, yeah, Sam, go ahead.
Is there not an amount for consulting, contract work in there as well? I thought we had $40,000 or $50,000 in there for contract work.
Brian, did we, did we up that? Was that 30, I think, that we're carrying in there?
50.
50?
50.
Yeah. I, I certainly agree with Chelsea that cybersecurity is a critical risk here. But I, I don't think that the second person is necessarily the one who's going to be dealing with that. I think there's plenty for a second person to do. And I agree in force that we've got expertise on the MTC that is outstanding in terms of cybersecurity and can help Jason and others figure out what to do there. And it may involve potentially some specialized contract work to shore things up. But it seems to me that, again, going forward with the second position, and if that turns out not to be the right answer, we can again, think about adjusting in October or whatever as well. But it seems to me there's value in committing to the second position and relying on the internal expertise to deal with the security issues that, that we couldn't afford to buy if we had to go out in the market and pay those folks their available rates, so.
Well, I think that every, that a lot of people have articulated to me and to this board that we can't afford somebody for what we want to pay for, you know, for, for the second person, for a cybersecurity person. So it's pretty obvious that's going to be something that's, we're going to end up contracting. The second person is going to provide that redundancy and that coverage and that, that people have been talking about for IT.
Yeah.
But just more generally, more generally, Sam, I, I mean, it just, it is. But just more generally, more generally, Sam, I I mean, it just it is, you know, we didn't create the timing, but we've got to live with the timing. And it just strikes me is courtesy isn't the right word, but but you know, as a matter of comedy that we should, before locking something in, since we've got the flexibility between now and and town meeting, to see what the new IT manager thinks. He may have a completely different view. I suspect that it's going to be, you know, some some somewhere in the spectrum of the of sort of the two approaches we've talked about. But I just think it it makes sense, since we've got the number in the budget that allows the flexibility to go either direction or somewhere in the middle. I I just think it makes sense not to try to make that decision tonight.
And I'm okay with that before town meeting here. I just think that by that point, we ought to have a pretty clear picture. And again, ultimately, there should be flexibility. If we put the money in salaries or whatever, we need to move it. Presumably, we can do that as well as we go forward. But I think, again, long term, we're going to need, I think, the two people there.
So are we are we comfortable and and Mark, I may need your help or or some other member of the board's help on this? Are we comfortable taking a vote that the Board of Selectmen support the budget in its current form with the proviso that a final number is to be provided by the Board of Health, and that number and only that number will change for purposes of the warrant?
Well, so if I, Brian, did Advisory tweak their budget?
Again, that view. I don't believe they did. Think they just voted against it with the understanding that if it wasn't for the part time, uh, full time, even though there's concerns about scanner, but if it wasn't for that, it probably would have been voted.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. Did Advisory tweak their own budget?
Oh, oh, their own budget? You mean the 3,500? Yes.
Okay. So there's a so there would be your proviso, Marty, would be that there's a, you know, with the with the 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 change to Advisory's own budget as voted as well as you know, the the Board of Health, the new number that the Board of Health has voted at their meeting today.
Okay, but no other changes?
But no other changes.
All right. Are folks comfortable with with taking that vote?
Yes.
Kathy Cook has just come into the meeting. She has her hand up.
All right, why don't we bring Ms. Cook over?
Once Kathy comes over, can you can you read that that motion again? I don't know if you wrote it down, but I'm not comfortable approving the Board of Health budget today. So I I have concerns. I think probably the same concerns that Advisory had on the admin and why it's being done this way. So I don't know if that will affect the motion that you made. Go ahead, Mark.
I'm sorry. All I was gonna say is you're not really approving the number. It's whether you're recommending it or not. It's going to be it's going to be the issue. I mean, Advisory's number is is their number because they're elected. So that number goes in. The question is whether is a question of whether recommendation or not.
Yeah, I I can I can tweak the motion. I mean, the the I mean, where I would like us to be is that we support the budget that we're putting forward. But reserving I mean, we reserve generally. Obviously, we can we can we can take another vote between now and and annual town meeting on any specific budget. Hey, Kathy, I'll be with you in just one second. But if there's if there's discomfort with even supporting the Board of Health number right now as part of the warrant, then I'll as I'll as Ms. Cook's talking, I'll think about some language that 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 might address that in the motion. Hi, Kathy.
Hello. This was so timely. So we just finished Advisory meeting. I said, I'll jump on to Board of Selectmen, see if I can let them know what we just did. And you guys were talking about what we wanted you to know. So very, very timely. So we have voted, we had five members up tonight. So the vote on the Board of Health budget was not to support the Board of Health budget zero to five. So no one voted for it. And it was because of their inflexibility with the admin position. I went to the meeting this afternoon. I tried again. I thought Mary Lou had changed her mind, but she didn't. She called me early and said, I'm not going to change my mind. They only had two people there. So the two people voted to keep Barbara Speary as a full time person. But of course, they really they really haven't dealt with the fact that Barbara Speary works for two departments. So where does that leave possibility? So that hasn't been worked out. He's still got hours in his budget for an admin, and he thinks it's Barbara Speary. So that's got to get worked out. But we felt like we have bent over backwards to try to accommodate what the Board of Health wants for fiscal year 22. We explained more than once that if you put Barbara in at 24 or 40 hours, then we can't get any cares reimbursement for the extra hours that she works there. Possibility has shown total flexibility in trying to work with them. I mean, just bent over backwards, saying whatever they want, they can get. She can work down there. She doesn't have to come up here. We'll get her new computer so she can access the tester software, the few hours that I really need her for. And so we said, okay, you know, we tried, we 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 worked with you on everything else. And this is the one thing that, you know, we're just kind of throwing money away by doing this. Now, one thing she did bring up that you guys may want to deal with is one of the reasons for not doing this is because of the concern they have that even though Carla has said she will apply for cares reimbursement for Barbara's excess cost. Apparently, Carla has said she won't do that for fiscal year 21, which is perplexing. I don't know why, but that's one of the reasons the Board of Health gave today for not wanting to reduce Barbara Speary below 40 hours. I don't think they're relevant. I mean, she said she'll do it for fiscal year 22. I don't know why she won't for fiscal year 21. I don't know why it's different. But I don't, that's one of the reasons too. So I said, you know, we'll, we're going to address, as we're going to try to continue to maximize the cares act reimbursement. But that was their their logic tonight. So there it is.
Okay.
So we don't intend to support that budget. And then we just needed to. So we want to see what you guys do and then try to come up with an agreement between the Advisory and Board of Selectmen as to what to do at town meeting, assuming so so that we do go to town meeting with an agreement. So then we know what to do at town meeting, one way or the other. So we're waiting to hear what you guys think. And then we can, we've got time to to decide what to do. But we did want to send the message to the Board of Health that we did vote against it, zero five.
Kathy, did you, can you speak to the changes that you made to the Advisory budget?
Our 40% increase in our budget. So when you line up percentages year over year, guess who wins Advisory? But of course, when you start with 2,500 and add 1,000 to it, we realized a few weeks ago that we're over budget for fiscal year 21, which is kind of embarrassing, because, you know, we think we probably shouldn't be. Set the set the standard for how you do budgets. So we didn't want to be over budget again for fiscal year 22. So, Mark, we added up what the cost of minutes are, we think, for it's all minutes. We don't do anything else. And we think that 3,500 is about two to $300 more than what we really need. So that that's kind of the long and short of it. So
Okay.
So we hope you support our $1,000. So we don't have to ask for two reserve fund transfers in a row.
Book salaries.
So anyway.
Well, I guess the easiest, the easiest thing then since IT and the Board of Health are the two that remain up in the air. Does anybody disagree with that? No, right? Okay. That I will move that the Board of Selectmen advance the Article seven to the to the warrant and that we support the the budget as currently compiled with the exception of the technology line item and subline items and the ultimate submission, we don't have a number yet by the Board of Health. And we will determine whether or not to support those numbers on or before town meeting.
Second.
All right. Are folks comfortable with that? It was a little bit, I tried not to make it too long winded. But basically, it's reserving. I don't think we really need to reserve our rights in order to be able to exercise them. But just to make it clear that 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 those are two budgets that we are not, that we are specifically not supporting as of April 20. Okay, that makes sense?
Yep.
Chelsea, you seem
So I'm supportive of the IT budget, but do I need to know if I'm supportive of salaries versus operating expenses tonight? Like, in order for like, I think it's important, because I think if we're going to debate this on town meeting floor, I think it's important that it's printed in the warrant on what the position is. And if Board of and and then on the flip side, if Board of Health is going to so I I did have the opportunity to watch the budget discussion today. And if that's not going to change, I'm prepared to take a position on that budget to be printed in the warrant. I I just think if we're gonna, if we're not going to be in agreement, then we need to I I just think it's going to get confusing if it's not printed. Advisory, it's going to say that they're not supportive on Board of Health. And then is it going to say on that budget at in at town meeting for BOS if we do it the way you suggested?
We can do it that way, correct, Mark? That's that that hopefully is my intention to flag those two.
You can do it that way. You can also, like I said, you can, I don't, I'm sorry if I if I misunderstood, but is the intention to leave IT and Board of Health to at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Marty, can I ask Kathy, how how is Advisory going to address the Board of Health budget? Are you going to put at town meeting or? No. Okay. So I'm just curious how Advisory is going to position this?
No, we want to send a message and say not support in the printed warrant because the effort we've made. I mean, Chelsea heard what happened this afternoon. There's other things in the budget that are still way up over last year, too. The budget is still up almost 40% year over year, even with the reduction. So it's still up a lot. And we just kind of left the little things alone because other things were so big. So no, we want the printed warrant to say on that line, I don't on that budget, not support.
So Marty, I would be in support, again, from my position, and I'd like the board to take a vote on this as well. And and it could be split. It could be I I could be, you know, three to one. It it I think it's important as well to know where the board stands on this as well as Advisory.
I guess my position is I don't disagree. I just don't know what the number is. I mean, it it's hard to vote on it. I mean, that's the problem that the Board of Health has put us in. It's it's hard to vote on whether or not we support a number when we don't know what the number is.
Well, you could say not support, and you're saying I don't support what's in the written warrant article. And then we can decide on what we think the right budget is in the next couple of weeks. I mean,
We don't know what that is right now.
Well, it right. So you've got so in, you know, so you have the last, the last information that we received from the Board of Health, you know, was the was the 300, you know, $340,000 number. That was the last voted number before the meeting this afternoon. The meeting this afternoon changed that, but it seems that the board is not comfortable with that number either. And so you know, I I don't know that that specific number, Mr. Chairman, is going to change the vote at all. It's simply, I I think it's the approach either with the number that as you have it or the number that I shall be, as I hope I'll be receiving sometime in the next, you know, 12 to 16 hours.
And Marty, if I may, I I I I think it it's imperative that if if Advisory is going to send a message and we don't support it, that we send a message as well.
I Lisa, I I agree completely. I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable voting on a phantom number at this point. And I'm trying to think of some language that can address that.
Marty?
Kathy, what, hold on one second, Sam. Do we, did they, did the Board of Health vote on a number? But you said there were only two people there.
There's only three on the board. So
So they so they had a quorum. And and that number is the 234 number?
Yes.
Okay. So are we in agreement that we would not, that even with the 234 number, we do not support it? And that's where I'll go to you, Sam, because I think you may have
Yeah, I I've got a question and a comment. What are we talking about here in terms of difference? Or is it like something like 25,000 bucks?
Less.
Less than 25, 20 some odd thousand.
Her salary is 54,000.
And so what's what's in the 234 number?
54,000.
54,000.
The whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, to answer your question, Marty, I support the 234. So we may have a split vote here.
Okay, well, it sounds like, Lisi, you're going to make a motion.
I am. Okay.
Or do you want me to make the motion and and try to incorporate your comments?
Go ahead. That's fine.
Okay. And that is that the the Board of Selectmen vote to support the 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 FY22 budget as currently constituted with the following exceptions. The Board of Health, where we vote not to approve and I guess
Did we split that? Because I I support everything but the Board of Health. So if if I have to vote on that one, then I'm I've split it.
All right. Try it again. All right, that the vote with the Board of Selectmen, I'll just take IT and Board of Health out entirely right now, that the Board of Selectmen other than the the line items for technology and for the Board of Health votes to support the FY22 budget as currently constituted.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Malinowski. Discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Board of Health, I will move that the Board of Selectmen vote to to support the Board of Health budget at either the $234,000 figure or the $357,000 fig dollar figure, whichever of those the Board of Health ultimately presents as its final budget number. I move to that we support that.
Second.
All right, discussion. None, Ms. Bracio.
Nay.
Ms. Malinowski?
Nay.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Healy is nay. So that fails one to three. And now, what do we want to do with IT? Do we want to, do we want to vote to support it at the at at the number, the detail to be sorted out at between now and town meeting? Is that is that where people are? Okay. All right, then I will move that the Board of Selectmen support that's line item 155, the technology item in the FY22 budget at the $473,000 and change. Figure the specific subline item detail to be determined between now and town meeting. By Ms. Malinowski, discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Mark, could you live with all that?
Yeah, there's one thing, and you were moving kind of fast. So I decided to just let you go, and then we can just try to clean things up afterwards. The one caveat, I think, is unless you agree that your first vote to support the budget is currently constituted, with the exception of IT and Board of Health, includes the change that Ms. Cook spoke to of the $1,000 in the Advisory budget.
It was my intent to incorporate that in my motion.
Okay, that then, yes, I can live with that.
Okay.
The other thing that we need you guys to weigh in on to help us before I go. So, Mark, is the CPC article for the townhouse, as far as the language go, final? And does it still say 95% of the town has to vote to sell it or 90%?
It says 90%, and it's final CPC has voted it.
Okay, so I'll go back and listen to what you guys say. I'm going to say bye to you in a second. But is it legal to ask the town to have a vote on a piece of real estate that's a 90% vote? Can you do that?
I am sure that it is not. But but that is that is a that is a visceral reaction, not a a researched reaction.
I know that I know the CPC had guidance ahead of time, both from Town Council and Bond Council as well as the Town Accountant. And I'm not going to tell you the pecking order that they, the hierarchy of the advice received, how it was, how it was, how it played out. But I do think that there may still be some questions. I do expect there may be some amendments on the floor.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you done with this, Kathy?
I am. Thank you, guys, for letting me come in.
All right, sure. All right, sure. Thank you.
All right, bye bye.
All right.
I suppose before we let her go, we should have found out how advisory voted on those other three articles they have open, but I'll. I'll have Mr. Ballantyne follow up with her.
She can just send us a quick chat.
Yeah, we can get that in the morning.
Okay. There was a hold on item eight, the Water Enterprise budget, discussion about that.
So I originally held that. But I got my questions answered, so I'm I'm good on that, but I didn't know if anybody else held it. I'm good on it.
Okay, then I moved that the the Board of Selectmen. Support. Annual Town Meeting Article Number Eight. Second by Ms. Malinowski, discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, so vote to support is approved unanimously. We are now on item nine, the and this, I think, was my hold, maybe others did as well. And I just just a Brian and or Mark, just are we? Is our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure? My memory is that that is on track with the sort of path that we've laid out on a longer term. Am I right about that?
Yeah, I'll let I'll let Brian answer that.
Okay.
That is correct, although I think when the. The regional, I should say, the Town of Northboro agreement runs out for the legal. Payback, which is another two years, I think we probably have a discussion about. Where that annual funding goes, but for now, yes.
Okay. Yes, Sam.
I I actually looked at the actuarial report on that. And that does look pretty good in terms of what the actuary are now calculating. I mean, we're we're sort of behind the eight ball, but there's some sort of. Mysterious distribution in like twenty thirty two or twenty thirty three out there that pumps like five million bucks into it that gets us to where we need to be by. Twenty thirty nine or forty, when the state requires us to be paid up. But there are also a lot of swings in between now and then that could happen relative to interest rates and. Market return on that stuff, so it's it's still fairly indeterminate, but again, we seem to be on the right track. With that number, and I know people have suggested we need to pump more money in there. It seems to me as long as we get to where we need by the state requirement, we're in pretty good shape, so I'm very comfortable with that number.
Yeah, I remember the auditor talked about that mysterious twenty thirty two or thirty three event, and it's still he he he. He endeavored to explain it, and I still didn't understand it.
A miracle happens.
Well, I I think and 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 Mr. Ballantyne can correct me. Hopefully, he keeps shaking his head, yes, but I think the influx of money they're talking about is once the towns, because we have our annual appropriation. Our assessment that we have to pay into Worcester County Retirement. And. That that comes due right around twenty thirty two, twenty thirty three, so once that is done. The assumption is that that million dollar plus assessment is going to then be able to be shifted to OPEB. And so then there could be really a great influx of of money going against on an annual basis, which would help us to close that gap of of. Of our liability, you know, fairly quickly.
Okay, all right, good. All right, again, that was my reason for holding that, but but I I now will move that the Board of Selectmen. Support ATM Article Number Nine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stivers, discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. That is also voted to approve unanimously four zero. And obviously, Mr. Shea isn't here for all these votes. My next number going through these is number nineteen. Am I right about that?
Article fourteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, I skipped fourteen.
That was one that you held.
Oh, did I?
Yes.
Oh, okay, and that was and the reason for that is is we've got a request. After the warrant had closed. For the Board of Health to to reopen the warrant and add a revolving fund. And the the that has not been done, and it's not going to be done. So the revolving funds that that will. Be part of Article fourteen are the revolving funds that. Existed at the time a warrant closed. I wanted to make everybody aware of that. Yes, Sam?
Understand, and again, I just to put a placeholder, I'm interested in pursuing that one, maybe bringing it back in the fall, but for now, you're right.
Yeah, I think it's I think it's I think it's worth a discussion. It just wasn't worth. You know, when there's an entire year to 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 come up with items for a warrant to to completely reopen the warrant when we heard at the last minute about a new revolving fund. Okay.
I have I have another comment on a different topic on that one.
Okay.
So we had increased the authorization for the rec revolving fund last year from three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. And. I think that's a high. Number, especially where I think through the end of. March anyways, we had we had spent like a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars out of the rec revolving fund, which included. Twenty three thousand for the new playground. So that's just a number that's concerning to me. I I just don't see why we need to. Have it that high. And and you know, with the new capital policy. I think we have some more controls over how it gets spent and the authorization that it has to go through to to spend capital items from there. I just I just don't know that four hundred is the right number.
I'm I'm not so concerned about that, Chelsea, given that this year has been a COVID year. And they're really getting geared back up. There's going to be a lot more revenues from user fees and so forth for. FY twenty two, I guess. I think my theory is I'd watch that for FY twenty two and see how that plays out, and if it turns out that that's. Far too big a number, then I'd be fine with scaling back there, but. Be in favor of giving him some flexibility for FY twenty two on that one personally.
Mark, can I ask a process question on that?
Sure, Mark, go ahead. Good, Lisa. I think you just froze.
You just froze. One of the so I'll make a comment while we're waiting for her to rejoin. Is there could be, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, you're back.
Oh. Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. I was filibustering until you came back.
Okay, am I frozen?
You were.
But you're good now.
Okay, so did you hear my question?
No.
Okay, so. If we approve this now, is it if it's something we determine as we move forward to the fall, that maybe we can watch this number? And is it something we can bring back and adjust?
So, and I'll look to Mr. Ballantyne just to check me, but. It may be, I I know that the in midyear. That the Board of Selectmen can increase. The limit as listed here, so in other words, if four hundred wasn't the right number, and we found that it was actually more, the board could increase the number. I don't know that it can go the other way. And and I'll have Brian check me on that, but the but the thought being is that if you're concerned the number is too high. You could go with a lower number with the understanding that the board could always vote to increase it during the year if the need arose.
I'll agree with that, but I I think you can do it at town meeting. I think you were asking at town meeting, Lisa.
At Fox Town Meeting.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure you can do it there. But I agree with.
It doesn't have budgetary impact. That's the reason, because it's because by by definition, it doesn't, because it's a revolving fund, so I gotta think you could go up.
Right.
Or down.
Right. Certainly a town meeting, right?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a concern.
I guess my inclination is I I I tend to agree with Mr. Stivers on this, that that who knows what the heck is going to happen in fiscal year twenty two. And my inclination would be to give them the flexibility on the higher end. You know, hoping that there's an explosion of. You know, programs, et cetera, et cetera, that they need the 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 higher number to absorb. Guess that's that's where I come down. But I'll let you make the motion on this one, Mr. Stivers.
I think I'll agree. I'll I'm fine. I'm fine with it. I just I just think it's a number we should watch for next year, and I understand. We're gonna have activities.
All right, Mr. Stivers, I won't shoot you out of the spot. I'll I'll move that the board to board. Article Number Fourteen. As constituted.
Second.
And Mr. Stivers seconds it. Discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, so that's unanimous as well with Mr. Shea not present. Now we're on to nineteen, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need more discussion on this, or do people pretty much know where they are?
Know where I am.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that we. The Board of Selectmen support Annual Town Meeting Article Number Nine, which is a CP article for the St. Mark's Church Bell Tower project in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Nineteen.
Did I say not Article nineteen?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars. Sorry about that. Second by Ms. Malinowski, discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Nay.
We have a comment about one of the. People involved in this to consider.
I I really, I don't.
Mr. Weller?
Yeah, that and and just. I don't disagree with the with the the statement that the three hundred thousand dollars is for partial funding of the remaining project cost totaling six twenty seven with the remainder raised by St. Mark's. I'm just using it as a as a shorthand for us. Nothing, none of my motions changed the language of the particular annual town meeting articles. But thank thanks for the update on the information. So with that. Motion that we support Article Annual Town Meeting Article Number Nineteen, as previously stated. Is that seconded by?
I somebody seconded, I do.
I'm gonna hang it on you, Mr. Stivers, again.
I think I.
Gosh, and none, Ms. Bracio.
Nay.
Ms. Malinowski.
Nay.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. So. I guess that is. A two two vote. How do we list that in the in the tally, Mark? Just as a two two vote or ATM?
It would either be, I think it would either be no position. Or it would, or if the board is more comfortable as a whole of putting it at town meeting, but. I you know, you really you you did take a position which essentially is is a split vote.
But not with everybody here, though.
I guess my inclination would be at town meeting. Just because of the the one way or the other is going to be a fifth person. To to presumably break this tie. Are folks comfortable doing it that way? Sam is, Chelsea?
That's fine.
And Lisa, okay, so ATM, Mark. Next I have is number twenty, which is the Town House. Restoration is the concern that that is raised here, the 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 language of the article? Okay. So. And 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 my read is that is that there is not comfort with the the current voting, maybe some other things as well. But with the current voting requirements that are included in the article. I see Chelsea nodding, Lisa, and Sam, where are you on? Is that your concern as well, or?
I'm okay with it.
You are okay with that number, okay, all right. That being the the primary concern, I'll move that we that the Board of Selectmen support. Annual Town Meeting Article Number Twenty, the CPA funding for Town House Restoration. In two million thirty dollars in CPA funds.
Second.
Second by Ms. Malinowski, discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, there is discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Exactly. I'm supportive of the project, but I'm not supportive of. The ballot. Yeah. Contract.
I'm not sure how we parse that in the.
So can I make it? Can I make a suggestion, then? Can we do? Obviously, I want to hear from counsel on this. I want to I want to know if it's even legal and whether an amendment needs to be done. Is this something we I hate to put at town meeting because I support the project. But I think by saying yes, we're agreeing to the language and. I I I think the language that high interferes with the Board of Selectmen's right to be able to to dispose of property.
Well, I also think it 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 has the same effect on a future town meeting's ability. To dispose of property. I mean, I just don't think from a. I mean, I'd be surprised if it's legal. But the idea that one town meeting can in perpetuity essentially create rules for future town meetings seems. Wrong. You know, very legal term, it seems wrong.
One town meeting can buy property that binds a future town meeting to pay for it, so it works both ways, I think.
No, I'm. Well, but that future town meeting can sell the property, I mean.
But not forever. Right?
But I again, I I don't quibble about the language so much, and it may indeed be legally questionable, but it seems to me my theory is that we ought to make it very difficult. To dispose of that property, and whatever mechanism works for that, I'm fine with. I think the current language. Would work if it's legal. If it's not legal, I would be interested in finding another way to. Make it equivalently difficult to sell.
Mark, could we put in the warrant that the Board of Selectmen support the project? Reserve for ATM. Language of the. Article, that gonna fit?
disposal terms or something, yeah.
What about just pending legal? Opinion?
Yeah, but it's not, I'm just, honestly, it's 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 gonna have to be.
I know.
I I think this is one of those where reasonable lawyers can disagree. And so I'm not sure regardless of what. With all due respect, Town Council says, I I am I am comfortable binding, you know, future town meetings. And I just, again, a very legal term, I don't think it's right. Even if it's turns out to be legal.
So I tend to agree with Ms. Bracio that it that it probably is more important for the board to support the project. And if there's some language that you can come up with, or if you want to designate the chair or somebody to provide that language, I'm happy to put the caveat in after support.
What is, again, I'm I'm much, the only thing I'm concerned about it was what is it going to say? So it's going to say Board of Selectmen support the article. But. Reserve as to the language of the article? Can we put that in the tag? Is that gonna fit as the the way the? The warrant is structured for presentation at town meeting?
So it will. So underneath each article, you have who it's proposed by and the selectman recommendation, advisor recommendation, and then a summary. Usually, it's either support or not support, but there is room if you wanted to put if you wanted to put something else under there similar to what you just said.
All right, is that are folks comfortable with that approach? Okay.
So if you could just repeat that again, Mr. Chairman?
This is like a test.
You've got it right twice in a row, so we're gonna go for the the trifecta.
All right, that the Board of Selectmen. Support ATM Article Twenty, the CPA Town House Restoration in the amount of two million thirty dollars. But. Reserve. To town meeting. Pending review of the language of the article. Okay.
Relative to disposition approval or more specific?
I just think just I don't think we have to be that specific about it, just, I mean, we all know what what the. What the what the review is that we want.
Okay.
How about reserve, reserve at town meeting pending review of motion?
It's fine with me.
Works.
I'm trying to make it small.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay. Because I think really at the, you know, the heart of it is the motion. The motion is what town meeting will vote on the article is what provides notice.
Okay.
So with CPC, the article pretty much is what the motion is, but.
And that accomplishes what we want to accomplish, giving notice that we support the project, but but. Expresses concern about the language.
Okay.
All right, so that's the motion. It was seconded by. Mr. Stivers, further discussion, none, Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski. Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, so that rather, we're leading the league in long motions tonight. We then, I think, skip, right, all the way to, well.
Twenty three, right?
Twenty three.
Twenty three.
And that's at town meeting, right?
It's just at town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think we have to take a vote on that, that that's just going to be reserved to town meeting. And the next one I have is number thirty. Um, and the next one I have is number thirty. Which is the local meals tax. I thought we reached, well, we did, I guess we reached agreement with advisory on that the, to adopt the local meal, to vote to adopt the local meals tax, um, that it would come into effect no earlier than January one, the specific date to be determined by the Board of Selectmen. That's where we are, correct? Uh, with that understanding as to the, to the, um, uh, to Article Thirty, I, I moved that the Board of Selectmen support ATM Article, um, Thirty, the local meals tax.
Second.
By Mr. Stivers. Discussion, none. Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, also unanimously approved. Uh, thirty-two. Is Ms. Kirk, uh, Ms. Cook still lurking out there? Did she leave us?
She is not there.
Did I hold this one, Mark?
I did.
Uh, okay, Ms. Malinowski did.
So I had held it because I didn't think it, I thought it was still the language that we had from last week, which I don't think was the updated language, but Mark, I think you sent out something this afternoon that had the updated potentially.
Two thirty-two this afternoon.
Okay.
This language came in. So, yeah, so, um, this is, this is the, yeah, so I think, um, hang on. Yes, the language that I sent out to you this afternoon, um, has the, has the correct language. I think you're, you're referring to, um, Section B. So that, that language is now correct. The, 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 um, the reference to recues has come out.
Okay, then I'm good. I just wanted to make sure we had the updated before we voted.
Yes, you do. Yep. That's why you got it so late. So, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So.
Okay, so with, with the, with the, the, the language as updated in Mr. Purple's, what time did you say it was, Mark?
Two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two, um, email for Arti- Article Thirty-two, I move that the Board of Selectmen support the, um, uh, the bylaw change to the Advisory Committee, ATM Thirty-two.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Malinowski. Discussion, none. Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye, also unanimously approved. Um, thirty-three. The capital improvement planning.
We voted that one.
Okay.
You voted, you voted that in the omnibus.
Oh, that was in the omnibus. Oh, okay. I gotta listen twice. So we're on to thirty-four then?
Yes. They were all holds from here on out.
Okay. Um, so I did not hold thirty-four.
I didn't.
I believe that one may have been me. So, um, I would request that we make this at town meeting. The CPA hasn't came in and talked to us at all about what changes they're looking to do.
Okay.
So I, I would just request that we invite them between now and town meeting and then give a position then.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
I see nods. All right, then we're not gonna take a vote on that one. That's ATM, Mark. Um, what's next? Thirty-five?
Yes.
Thirty-five. Outdoor illumination. All right, and I invited Ms. Houlihan, and she is here.
Mr. Chairman, can I note one item that was changed, um, uh, very late this afternoon? Um, under, so it's on page fifty-one of the warrant that you have.
Okay.
Uh, under C, enforcement, the sentence, the first sentence after enforcement, beginning with the owner of any lot or property, and ending in the third line with established by this bylaw, is removed.
Okay.
So that sentence has been removed, um, and, um, I spoke with the town planner, um, uh, even later this afternoon, and did not have a chance to send you about a new version. So that has, that line has been removed from the version that will be in the warrant.
Okay. Um, and otherwise, did we bring over Ms. Houlihan? I, and Mr., um, Mr. Heilman is someone who worked, he worked on that with you, Marty? Yeah. And Marty, you're muted. But I took that as a yes.
Should be a blessing, Marty.
Yeah, but I took that as a yes.
Hi, everyone. Evening.
All right, so I am gonna jump into, to, uh, others may have held this, but I, I certainly did. The, the, the three concerns that I raised about this, and they all, well, two, the first two are interrelated. Um, and number one doesn't have any, the, the, the first is the, the more general one, which, which has to do with the applicability. I, I don't have a problem with the, I don't have a problem with the applicability. I just don't think your language accomplishes it. Um, and I'm, I, 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 I'm at a loss for understanding why the, why you think it does. So, shoot.
So, it, Town Council reviewed that, and so that is why it's like that. So we had proposed, he had come back and suggested that we provide more clarity, and then we sent it. So Town Council has reviewed this twice. Not this most current version, but this is as of the last time roundabout, but that language has not changed. So, a- and Sarah, you can, you can chime in as well, but my, you know, the feedback that, um, uh, Aldo had provided was that it met its, it, it met the need to be able to clarify that this applies to all residents and people in South Borough.
I, I think that he is talking about one thing and I'm talking about another. Um, I agree with you that, that the language of B. All right, so we're talking about B, where it says applicability, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, where the app, applicability talks about it applying to, um, all outdoor illumination. And then lists various exceptions. Now you're, i- in, in, in email traffic, we had back and forth, and with the, the fact sheet that went out this afternoon, there is a, I'll, I'll terminate a belief that the bolded language that says the replacement of fixtures or luminaires that's below that somehow modifies the language talking about the applicability, and it just doesn't. There's nothing in there that modifies the language above, and, and I, I, I understand what you're trying to do with that, um, which is make it clear that when somebody, um, replaces, or it's broken, or whatever, that they're obligated to replace. Um, and that's fine to include that in there, but that does not modify the fact that all outdoor illumination is, I think, covered as soon as you, um, a- as soon as this bylaw is adopted. And if your intent isn't to do that, I think all you have to do is put in a line, and, and I suggested that in the email. It just says, unless and until that intervening event happens, then, um, the applicability provision doesn't apply, because otherwise I think it does. And so you're, you're, you're doing what you don't want to do, which is making it immediately applicable to everybody in town. Does that make sense?
I guess so. I, I, Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm following. I just, so we did not, um, change, you know, intentionally did not change the applicability language, um, because we wanted to ensure that that was staying intact with the historical information and how the regulation has already been set in terms of applicability to the bulb and to the luminaire itself. So I guess, yeah, that's the, the applica- the applicability as it changed. So I, I don't know where the connection is between that and the replacement clause.
But you want to modify applicability. You don't want your bylaw to be applicable immediately.
It is already.
It's applicable immediately. I mean, it's already applicable, right. I mean, that's, I guess that's the.
But, but you, but it's not, because you're, you're, in, in other words, i- in other words, your fact sheet says that it's not, that everybody doesn't have to go out and change their, their outdoor illumination immediately. Correct?
Yeah, if I could, if I could chime in, I think.
Based on what? What language in your bylaw says that? There's none.
I think, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I understand what you're, you're saying, that, um, we are, the, the new bylaw makes one change in that three thousand Kelvin or lower bulbs are, are now what the standard would be. And we have one statement that says, um, you know, it's applicable to all, all illumination. Um, and then the second one says that however, um, until the fixture expires or needs to be replaced. Then, so, so the first applicability statement would, would mean that as soon as the bylaw goes into effect, everybody would have to have three thousand Kelvin or, or lower.
Right.
Yeah, so, so, and, and, and yet the second one, yeah. So I, I think what, whatever, whatever language we, we could use there, um, to, to make it not immediately applicable. That's, that's really what we were going after. We, we, we tried not to change the applicability too much because, you know, because this bylaw is not about changing the applicability. It's about, keeping that the same, but I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you, the, the, the way this is written, believe me, there's, there has to be some, there has to be some modification or qualifier in the bylaw in order for that first paragraph on A not to be immediately applicable to all outdoor illumination. And again, the, I, I suggested a single line that just says, unless and until those events happen in the bold that you don't have to change. And I can, I can send that language again. Um, I think it's a pretty easy fix, but I think it will then specifically do what your fact sheet says you want to do. Um, but that leads into my second question. If you're, if you're comfortable doing that, I don't understand why you don't have a sunset provision. Um, and by that, I mean, I, I get that you don't want to make the bylaw immediately applicable so that everybody has to either be in violation or run out and change their, their outdoor illumination. I get that. What I don't get, though, is why you don't want to set a date certain in the future when basically the zoning kit kicks in, because the way it's written right now, it's, there's never gonna be any certainty about what bylaw is applicable. Um, there's gonna be, well, has somebody changed? Has they not changed? Do they have a particularly long-lasting, you know, bulb or something like that? I just think that it's perfectly fair to give folks notice, fill in the blank, four years, six years, eight years, that you don't have to change, but as of four years from the enactment of this bylaw, six years from the enactment of this bylaw, then, um, the, the exception, um, is eliminated, and everybody has to be in compliance. I'm not sure why you wouldn't do that.
So our worry specifically was for place, um, uh, forcing changes in like the financial um, burden that that would place on potentially, let, let's just say like an office building. And so we have said if there's a point where fifty percent or more requires changing, whether the fixtures break or whatever reason, but until that point, we didn't want to put any undue, uh, financial burden on, on companies or people in a fixed amount of time. So we, so we really do kind of say, hey, if it could be fifteen years, if you have an LED that lasts for thirty years, then you do not have to change it until, you know, twenty, what are we in, twenty fifty-one? And I know that's a little crazy, but we also just really want to be cautious of placing a financial burden on any companies that have chosen to house their business here in South Borough or in residence who might not be able to make those changes in four or five years.
Yeah, we talked a lot about the burden on the business community, and, and especially given that in, in the last five years or so, many of them have sort of turned over to, um, to different fixtures. And, um, it, it was a difficult, you know, um, difficult issue. We talked through it and decided that this, this is what we thought the best solution was, uh, rather than to force everyone at a certain point in, in time and, uh, to do that, it would, it would, you know, across the town, it would represent, you know, everyone having to invest, uh, a lot of money at the same time to do this.
I, 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 I hear you, and, and I hope I'm wrong, but I think it's gonna be a mess. Um, because, you know, House A is, is going to have to be in compliance. House B isn't. Have they changed? There's gonna be no way to, to, to track when somebody, I mean, it, it, I, I, I would put in, I don't care if you have to kick it out ten years. I would put in a sunset provision that just put folks on notice. I, 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 I can't force you to. I ju- I just think that you're gonna want, gonna want that certainty in your provision. Um, rather than, are people in compliance? Are they not in compliance? Are they supposed to be? Have they changed their bulbs? That just seems, um, like a whole lot of uncertainty for a, uh, for a zoning bylaw, but that's.
Marty, can I make a comment?
Yeah, Sam.
I guess I'm, I'm attracted to the sunset provision as well, but it seems to me there are a couple of safety valves here. One is that the planning board has fairly broad rights to waive requirements depending on various circumstances through here. I think that creates some potential for relief. I think we also have the opportunity down the road, if we do set ten years or whatever the number is, to take an assessment, you know, five, seven years down the road and see, is this something that's likely gonna create substantial hardship on people and come back and amend this to give us another five years or whatever the reasonable time period is. So, uh, I think that I'm, I'm generally in favor of the sunset so people can plan accordingly, and we can assess, is it a big deal or not? And, and modify accordingly.
Um, Ms. Brascio or Ms. Malinowski, any thoughts?
So, yeah, thank you. So I actually, uh, on this, I, I believe that planning board's taking the right approach. I really think if you start trying to put this, this lighting bylaw through and make it more complicated than it needs to be, and also I, I think the, the additional potential burden financially i- is going to play into this. So, um, unlike you and, and Sam, Marty, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm, I'm on the opposite side of the fence.
It's okay. I'm used to that. Chelsea?
Um, so I, I guess I would be in favor of the four, six, eight years if Marnie hadn't just said that somebody could, could be okay for the next thirty years. So I, I think I was, was agreeing with the sunset until I, until it could be a much longer term that you would actually have to do it. I guess my question for Marnie is, um, how do you know that when you're, when we're enforcing this? Um, how do we know if somebody didn't replace it three months after it went into effect, or if it was before it went into effect?
So I, I think, to be honest, and most of this policing is gonna be on the industrial and business side. I don't think you're gonna see residents. I think what we will see, technology, much like emissions with companies requiring emissions to help our, our global environment. I think we're going to see the technology change, and that stores will not be necessarily offering LE- LED lights that are over a certain Kelvin. So I, I don't know when that will happen, but I do think that the industry as an entire industry will be moving in this direction. So I think to create any false parameters on people to kind of put in, and I also think if you put a sunset in, then you're putting an extreme burden on your building commissioner to en- enforce. And I, I think we can avoid that entirely by just allowing people to kind of make the right decision environmentally. I, I mean, at the end of the day, we're not gonna police whether you change your LED light bulb outside of your, outside of your door. I think if you are environmentally conscious, you might want to do that, but otherwise I, I don't think there's gonna be any enforcement there.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, all right, and then the last, I, oh, the two other things. Number one is, is Choate, is Choate covered by this?
So Choate would be just like every other field. So if they're lighting fixtures, um, fifty percent or more at a point require replacement, then they would need to comply with this, um, this bylaw.
Would you think they comply now, Marnie?
They do not comply.
Do not?
I, and, and.
If, if I could add as well, that, um, one of the primary reasons, um, you know, that, that, uh, uh, two main reasons we're doing this, right? One is to bring the planning board's lighting bylaw up to date because it's really old and all the engineering standards aren't used anymore. And so it brings it up to modern engineering standards. But the second thing is, is to tip our hat to all of the science that's going on with, uh, with light pollution and particularly blue light. Education is one, one of our big, um, uh, goals here, and i- i- in doing this and taking a stance as a town and in, in getting serious about it. And I think that in moving forward as we do that, I would like to think that the board, I would like to think that the town doesn't want our kids blasted with blue light at nine o'clock at night for night games for five years straight. There are serious health implications to that. And so I think as, as we move forward and, and do this, it's a very forward-thinking bylaw. Um, and so I, I think it's probably gonna spearhead a lot of positive conversations. Um, and so I, I think it's probably going to spearhead a lot of positive conversations with, with that. Not unlike the, the, the great conversations that took place between the planning board and REC in designing and implementing the lighting for the new fields that are going into place. I think the same type of conversations can be had and this bylaws is, is able to start though.
The, my, my concern for Choate is, is very simple. If, if it is, I don't know what the amount is, how, how much mark was spent on, on, um, retrofitting Choate for lighting? It was a lot.
Several hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the replacement of the lights at Choate simply a matter of changing light bulbs? Or are we going to have to retrofit Choate all over again because of the size of the poles or the, the configuration of the lights or something like that? And do we know that?
I actually can't answer that question. I'd actually have to look at Choate and see what the, what, what we ended up doing there. I don't have that information with me.
Okay. I mean, that's, at least to me, that's a big deal. That's a big deal.
But the spirit, the spirit of the bylaw is written such that, such that if, if it reaches a time where Choate would, would have 50% of their, their stuff need of replacement, they're going to have to replace it with something anyway. They're going to be spending the money regardless. And, and this bylaw just establishes that when you spend the money, you do it with responsible lighting. It's, it's, if, if 50% of their lights are, their fixtures and their lights are in need of, of, of replacement, they're going to be, you know, having the project anyway.
Because of the bylaw? That, that's my point. I guess that.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm saying that if 50% of their lights are, are in need of repair or replacement, they're going to be spending all this money to do that regardless of any bylaw.
No, no, I understand that. That's why if it's simply a matter of replacing the lights, it was a bit, Choate was an engineering, um, challenge. Let's put it that way. And I, I, I don't know enough about lighting. I don't know enough about engineering, but I know it was a big deal. And the, 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 the poles had, were the wrong height and then the lights were the wrong angle and everything like that. If simply, and it costs a lot of money. If simply dealing with Choate going forward is when the existing lighting goes out, that, that lighting that complies with the bylaw is plugged in and the, the lighting there for those fields works fine, that, that then there's not an issue at all. But if the, if, if the lighting as required by this bylaw would essentially make the money that the town spent a waste because we'd have to reconfigure the poles, reconfigure the way the lighting was done, et cetera, et cetera. The town may ultimately go that direction, but I think we need to know. Yeah.
Can I go back to what Mr. Stiber said before though? The planning board has pretty broad authority to be able to waive, um, requirements for such things. Do they not?
They do in this bylaw.
So it's not compulsory. The planning board can, can make that decision.
Well, no, it is compulsory. It is compulsory, but there can be an exception to it. That's different than it not being compulsory.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
The planning board can choose to, to not enforce that.
Uh, yeah, Mark?
Uh, the one thing I want to point out, I'd have to confirm this with, with the REC director, but, um, Musco lighting usually comes along with a 25 year warranty on the lights. So if something happens to the lights, if the bulbs need replacing and things of that nature, then they come out and they take care of that. Now, I, I don't know what the understanding would be. If a bulb goes out, does that, you know, if, if enough bulbs go out, does that put it under the bylaw and then you lose the value of the replacement, you know, warranty that, you know, essentially you pay for when you buy the lights?
I don't know if there's a, and maybe loop timid on this. Again, uh, it, it, at the end of the day, the decision can be regardless of whether or not it would have an adverse impact on the way the lighting is currently structured on Woodward, but that, uh, Woodward at Choate, that that's the way folks want to go. I just think we need to know that.
So I'll take that as an action. Why don't I take that as providing you guys some feedback as to whether, what, what that situation at Choate might be? And then Dustin and Sarah and I can decide whether we write an exception clause or, that makes sense.
Perfect.
Because that Musco lighting is going to apply to all the REC projects. So I, I, I think if it's, if it's something that we, that can be addressed, I think it, you know, it would, it would benefit all of those.
But the, my understanding is that the, the REC projects that are just approved, they are already in compliance with the bylaw.
That's correct.
Yeah. So it's Choate that's the issue.
Okay.
Okay. And then the final thing is just a, a, I, I understand there was, there was, there was, there was disagreement between an, an opinion issued by town council to the planning board and the building department's view of, of, of what was required for, dealing with complaints under the, the existing bylaw. The, the, this has got nothing to do with that. It's got to do with the, the compliant, the, the enforcement of this falls to the building department, to the building inspector. And almost by definition, the enforcement is going to require, it seems to me, it's going to require nighttime visits to properties. And I just, and this is a discussion, I guess, for the Board of Selectmen, um, is I, I, I certainly would, would want a policy that, that a representative of our building department, um, notwithstanding they have responsibility for dealing with a complaint, that they not go to, that they not enforce the complaint, particularly at night without some law enforcement presence. It's just too dangerous.
Can I ask what you mean by that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want a, a, someone who works for the building department who's got no law enforcement background at all going out on an enforcement call to somebody's private property. That's just, that, that is not a wise way to approach things, in my view.
I'm sorry, is that different from the daytime? Are you saying this is something at night that it makes a difference or?
Well, it definitely makes a difference at night, but I'm not, I, I'm not sure how comfortable I feel during the day, but, but a nighttime and, and, um, a nighttime visit as part of this enforcement, I, I, I just, you, you, I don't think the town of Southborough from a liability standpoint or otherwise can be sell, sending out someone who doesn't have, um, um, uh, law enforcement training or otherwise to somebody's private property to investigate whether or not they're in compliance with a, with a, with a, a town bylaw. I just don't think that's a good idea.
And I doubt there'd be much enforcement during the day of this one.
Yeah. I mean, that's the, and, and again, I, it doesn't change the way the, the, the language of the bylaw. It just, it, I'm, I'm just putting you all on notice that, that I feel pretty strongly about that. I, I, both from a, I don't want to put somebody's safety at issue. But also from a liability standpoint, I just don't think the town wants to be sending out a building department employee to private property at night, um, without the presence of law enforcement. It's just not a good idea.
If that's an operation, I think we can manage.
So that's, that's just a, that is just a notice that, that I don't want anybody to, anybody to be surprised when that, that is, that is part of the approach that I think is appropriate for the way the enforcement is done here. I just, it, it just, it's not, it's not a smart thing to do.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, we, we took the time between the last meeting to look, I, I did, to look at a bunch of different towns that have, have passed bylaws like this and see what their enforcement language was. And, and without exception, they, they simply referenced the enforcement, um, protocols for the building department, referenced the enforcement for the town. I guess personally speaking, I'm, I'm still not clear what you mean by how, how there's a difference between daytime and nighttime was with respect to liability and, and danger and things like that. It's, it's, uh, are we talking about tripping hazards or, or you can't see where you're going?
Any sort of an investigation on somebody's private property at night?
Yeah.
I mean, that's dangerous.
If I hear somebody tramping around my yard at night, uh, I'm certainly on the alert what's going on here. And some people who, you know, may have, you know, access to weapons or whatever might start shooting somebody. I mean, you can't ever tell what's going to happen in terms of people tramping around at night. There's enough.
I, I don't know what the general policies are, but isn't it, isn't it policy to, to give them a heads up that you're going to be coming to their property though?
You could. It depends whether you think that's a good idea or a bad idea. Um, but it.
I don't think it belongs in the bylaw though. I think.
No, 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 no. I, I, my reason is, I, I, I agree. It doesn't belong to the bylaw. I'm just telling you that that's my view of, from an enforcement standpoint. I don't know if that's the reason that the building department, took the position that they were not the enforcement arm under the existing language. I don't, that may well have been. I don't know. But I just know that, that, that if they are going to be the enforcement arm, that we've got to take a, 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 a long look at how we are going to make sure that, that our building department employees going out to private property are safe. And particularly when they, they're making nighttime visits.
Can I pose a question? Do we think that there's going to be any more, um, complaints with the new bylaw than we have now? Do we think that there's any reason why that would happen?
I have no idea. I mean, I, I don't know one way or the other.
Yeah. Cause I think it's our stance that we don't see any reason. Yeah, we don't see any reason why this would, would change the number of complaints. And, and I think the, it's probably exceedingly low, the number of complaints we get about lighting in town.
Except the building department, their position was, and, and it only came to a head within the last six months or so. Their position was, I'm not sure that I even knew, knew that that was their position, uh, but their position was that they did not have the enforcement responsibility for the current bylaw. Am I right? That, that's the, that was their position, right, Marnie?
That was.
Yeah. So even if there were complaints, they weren't complaints that, that found their way, um, or that were, were dealt with by the building department. So that, that clearly would change under the, under the language of this bylaw. I get that. Um, and someone has to enforce it. It just, I, I, I'm, I, I, from a town's liability standpoint, if putting, safety is not unimportant, but just from a town steward standpoint, sending someone out to do any sort of investigation at night is dangerous. Period. It just is dangerous. If somebody came to my house, I'm a pretty nice guy. If some, if I saw somebody on my front lawn, I don't have a firearm, but, but it's a different, it, 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 it's not something that you want to, it's not, you don't want to put someone in harm's way and you want to make sure that the town's liability is protected. That's all.
Marty, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So Dustin, Mar, Marnie, I'm not sure which one of you may know the answer to this. I, I'm assuming, and, and I know it's true. There's a lot of towns that have outdoor lighting bylaws and a lot of towns are updating because of the new dark sky technology and whatnot. So do you have any idea enforcement wise, what steps other towns may or may not have put in place? That may answer some of the questions that we have.
Yeah. So in, in my investigation of, of, of that, um, particular issue, a lot of the towns are opting for a, a very simple line of sight enforcement. So we're, so the, the pre, the existing bylaw as well as the new bylaw, um, it requires that lights be shielded for the vast majority of lights that are in town. That excludes decorative lights and the details are in the bylaw and things like this. But, so if somebody has a, a, a very bright spotlight in their backyard, it, the current, the existing bylaw requires that it's simply shielded to be shining on their property and not other people's property. There's a simple line of sight issue where if, if there's a trespass issue, let's say, and, um, someone's spotlight is, is shining into your yard. If you're standing at the perimeter of your yard, um, and there is a trespass issue, the physics of it dictates that if you can see the actual bulb with, with line of sight, then the shield is not blocking it. It's not protecting it. So a lot of the towns simply have a, a, a line of sight policy that if from someone else's property, you can actually see the bulb of the luminaire, then the physics dictates that there must be light coming directly from the bulb into that property and it's not shielded. And in those cases, it simply just dipped, dipped the shield down so that we can't see the bulb anymore. And that would, in effect, push the light off of the, the encroaching area.
And is that something, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
No, I was just going to ask, is, is that a more of a, a part of the bylaw or a policy? How is, how is that handled?
Yeah. I, I only saw one, uh, example where, where I think it was part of the bylaw, but not unlike ours. It, it, and I say it was part of the bylaw. It wa, it was, the bylaw existed and then they had sort of a policy section or rules and regs, um, part of that. Yeah. That, that it existed in, so that it could be changed.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we would concur that it would be in a rules and regs piece. And I, you know, I just don't want to walk away from any of the public that's listening to this meeting that this is going to create any mass hysteria and that people are going to need to answer the door with a gun. Like I, I just, I, I don't want to create something that is nothing. Like I think we've not have any issues around, you know, around this. We are essentially not changing anything but for asking people to reduce their luminaires and to abide by blues, blue light, which is a lower, a lower, um, grade and, and, and 3,000, um, L E K, uh, sorry, not L E K, LED bulb or blue light. And so for the, for the vast majority, it's a technical change. And so I, I guess my biggest worry is that people are walking away from these Board of Selectmen meetings feeling that Chairman Hilli, you are representing the entire board and some of your concerns. And I, I just, I want to make sure, is that actually true? Does the board, all of you support that you're very concerned with enforcement?
I, I, I'll, I'll let, I'll let the other board members, but then I'll respond to that.
So I'll jump in here, I guess. Um, so yes and no, Marnie. I mean, I understand we currently have a bylaw on the books and enforcement is written within that. I, I guess some of the things that we just talked about, the, the line of sight, I think would take care of some of the enforcement concerns that I would have with, you know, if the, if the building inspector gets a complaint, the only way she can go out and enforce is at night or at dusk so she can see. But I think the line of sight wording would take care of some of that. And that's why I asked about what other towns do. Cause obviously other towns are doing this and they're doing it successfully. So, uh, if, there's certainly a way to do this. And, and I, I am, um, supportive of this. It's just, I'd like to know how it's done in other towns to address just that enforcement piece. So I don't know if that answers your question, Marnie.
Thank you.
I, I have some level, but again, I, I, I think other towns are doing it. So there's a way to do it.
Sam or, or Chelsea want to weigh in?
So I, I think I have two concerns, um, or maybe, maybe I have a question first. So process wise, in terms of enforcement, if the building commissioner gets a complaint, um, is the first step that she would go out and view it? Or would it be that she calls the homeowner or the, um, the company that has the violation again, or the questionable light against them? And they would be asked to remedy the situation without her having to go out? I guess that's my first question. I don't know.
Well, I would just. Contact form and a complaint process now.
Yeah. I'm just not familiar with the process.
But we don't. See, that's the thing. The building inspector, it, it, the planning board thinks that there's a process, but there's not. They, there's a, there's a, there's a decision from town council that interpreted, um, the, the, the bylaw to apply a certain way. The building inspector interpreted differently. And as the executive carrying out the responsibilities, you know, uh, an opinion from town council is just that. It's an opinion. And as a result, the building inspector was not carrying out this responsibility. So in that respect, it is a new responsibility for her. She's not been doing it in the past. Am I right?
Do we honestly believe that the bylaws in town only represent the 25% or so that's municipal and, or, or private business?
I'm not sure what, I, I, I'm just telling you that the building inspector did not, did not view the existing bylaw as requiring her to field the sort of complaints we're talking about from residential and the like. That's why the change is made in the bylaw to specifically include that responsibility for, for, in this instance, it's a her, for her. So, so there's a responsibility that has not existed for the building inspector, um, that is now going to exist. And that's the responsibility that I'm talking about. It's not make believe. And, and concerns about people going out, um, investigating even civil administrative items at night is not, Marnie, I'm not overstating it. It, it, it is a real concern and it's a, it's a, it's something that the town will have to address. You may disagree with the fact that it's a concern, but, but, and, and, uh,
Respectfully, I do.
Yeah. Well, I, 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 I think I've got a little bit of a different law enforcement background than you do. People get hurt.
So Ms. Malinowski, do, do you agree with that in terms of the enforcement?
So that's what I was getting to. I, I mean, I would rather deescalate the situation without having the building commissioner have to go out at night. I do, I do have a concern of sending, um, a town employee to a residence at night, although I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what the solution is. I don't know that including law enforcement in that is the best solution either. Um, you know, because that, because then is that going to escalate the concern of the resident answering the door? Um, so I would rather try, I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, and I don't think the bylaw is the appropriate place to put what your process is and the policy and procedure, but you know, what are the steps that you're recommending that the building commissioner follow? Because, because I, I, yes, I would be concerned, um, Because because I, I, yes, I would be concerned um. With her going or or any town employee going um who is not. And I don't want to, I don't want to use the word trained, I I I guess it's, it just, I think. Could be a little bit risky to to do that. My second concern is um how we would staff that. If if we did have to do it at night and Dustin, when you were talking about the um being able to see the bulb. From trespass on onto a lawn. Is that something that could be analyzed during the day and not not necessarily has to be at night? Because if you can visually see the ball, then it could be.
It can.
During the day.
It can.
Um, I'd be more comfortable with dealing, I mean, she she does deal with things during the day. Now, when she does inspections, I I just think that we need to be careful on how we. What kind of process we follow to try to do this, because if if we do get a complaint, then it is probably some sort of neighborly dispute. And and I, you know, I don't want to put a town employee um in the middle of that at night.
Can I? Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I I was just gonna add, um, that one thing I I forgot to mention is that that um. As part of a lot of the uh the rules and regs sections of these that I I did review. The recommendation was just that, it was that in most cases, these can be uh, these these complaints can be um, can be fixed, can be resolved. Through neighbors simply talking to each other about it. And and for for a lot of them, that was the building inspector's recommendation that, you know. Why don't you try to work it out with your neighbor, let me know how it goes, and then we'll step in if we need to, but most of the time it gets resolved in that way.
I think that's the ideal.
And if I could just add too, and and another option, Chelsea, you've brought up a bunch of good points is. Obviously, somebody's going to take the time to complain, they're going to stand in the yard, they're gonna know what they're complaining about. Maybe you put the burden of proof on the person that's complaining, you submit your complaint with, you know, some type of uh. Video or a picture that, you know, might satisfy the building inspector having to go out there as well.
So we we did not feel it was in our jurisdiction to dictate what the plan, what the process would be for the building inspector. I think we can give suggestions. But I think we felt that either it's a collaborative discussion, but we would not require a certain process be followed. So right now, there is a complaint process, there's a standard. Kind of S O P, if you will, to put a complaint into town, and then the building inspector inspector follows a certain um protocol. So I think that we just did not feel it would be appropriate, and and we're certainly happy to have that collaborative. Conversation, and I just don't know if that could happen prior to the 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 town um voting this in. Because I don't think there's receptivity to belief that that this is her job to enforce now. So I think we kind of have to see if the town approves it for us to have a collaborative process on the back end.
Okay, thank you, and I wasn't implying that you should have come up with the process. But I'm curious on your suggestions, thank you.
Okay, so anything else, Sam, did you have something?
I did, please.
Okay.
I guess I see approving or not approving the proposed bylaw and enforcement as two very separate issues, they're related, but they're very separate. I'm not sure it's worth a lot of time debating how we're going to enforce at this point. I think there's considerable evidence that many towns actually do enforce this kind of thing successfully. People aren't getting, you know, harmed or whatever from the enforcement process or or horribly burdened economically for enforcement. I think the building inspector is exactly the right place for enforcement here. I think that we collectively, Mark, for example, operationally could uh put together a model with help from the planning board or others to. To deal with enforcement. I I'm again, in favor of the bylaw, we've suggested a couple of uh changes here, and it seems to me we need to move forward and. And make a vote.
All right, is that a motion?
Yeah, remind me.
You're gonna make me do this one too.
One proposed change for the uh applicability section. And then um, I guess I'm I'm prepared to support the no sunset at this point. And see how that goes, and so those are the only things that were open issues, is that correct?
And and updating on Chote.
Yes, I'll take that on.
But but that was a technical question, right?
Yes, applicability, I guess.
In terms of the language of the bylaw, the only language change is the new sentence, Marty, that you'd suggested. In the app, the bottom of the applicability section.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be my language, but something that makes it clear that that it it only becomes applicable when. The whole paragraph kicks in. Okay.
I I'll.
Comes up.
I'll move that we uh support the proposed bylaw with that modification in language.
All right, I'll second. Discussion, none, Ms. Brascio.
Oh, I have discussion, sorry.
All right.
So. I I I am generally supportive of the bylaw. I just. I'm not comfortable taking a vote tonight without seeing if we're going to be adding additional language, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of the sunset. So I guess I hate to vote no against the bylaw with with that being a mitigating factor in it.
In there.
No, but didn't you say in your motion that?
The only change is the sentence that Marty had suggested.
Okay.
Unless and until, yeah.
An issue, but then then. I backed off on that, so.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood, then. No discussion.
Oh, I, so, sorry, I have a question.
Chelsea?
So. The enforcement piece isn't spelled out here, because there's going to be like rules and regs related to this, right? And. That's up to this board to come up with that and work with the building commissioner on, is that accurate?
And the planning board.
Think it's gonna be, I I think, I think there, I I think it's gonna have to come from two directions. Because there's going to have to be, and and correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the of the view. There are going to have to be rules and regulations for that that can lay out, for instance, things like. It what 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 burden a complaint it might have, what information they might have to put in a complaint, et cetera, et cetera. That that's not going to come from the Board of Selectmen, that obviously is going to come from the planning board. But but. From a, from an operational side of things, whether it comes from the Board of Selectmen or it comes from Mr. Purple, there are going to have to be guidelines. Um, and I know Mark has already talked to Lori Lavoli about this, and she has, you know, she has concerns about about. Wh- what it means in terms of her going out at night. And I and I think that falls on us to come up with operational guidelines for um how she carries out that process. So I think it's it's going to be coming from two different directions. Does anyone agree with that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chelsea.
No, go ahead.
They do from from M- 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 Marnie or or Dustin, do you disagree with with that sort of breakdown that I just laid out?
No, that's fair to me.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, and I think moving forward, it would be great to work with them on that.
Okay.
So we're voting, we're voting for the language in the bylaw. As writ, as written with those um two changes.
One change, right?
Right, and all it does, all it does in terms of enforcement, Chelsea, is is, I think, two things. Number one is it um makes it clear, and this goes back to the applicability section. That um um the various residential properties are covered by the bylaw. And fall within the jurisdiction from a complaint standpoint of the building inspector. And number two, it removes the language that was in there before that put the burden of proof on the um homeowner. For establishing that they weren't in violation of the bylaw, as opposed to the normal burden of proof that would lie with a complaintant. Am I right about that?
That's accurate.
Okay.
But my motion, Chelsea, didn't include Choate, I thought Choate was a uh technical question. For a planning board to follow up on to confirm what was involved in terms of uh changing those lights when they do uh become subject to the bylaw.
Yeah, and my point on Choate is, I just think it's it it is. It's important for, I'd like to know whether or not there's a a a significant cost that could be lurking there. Because of all, everything that went on before in terms of the way Choate had to be configured. Ideally, the answer is no, it's just a matter of of when it hits the fifty percent that all of a sudden there um, they they fall under the bylaw. That that's, it'd be great if that's the answer, but if it's not the answer, I think I and I I suspect other folks are going to want to know that 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 cost is lurking there.
Okay.
And we could change our position before town meeting if the planning board comes back with an answer to that one, says it's a big deal.
Well, I think that in that in that instance, I'm not sure of changing our position, I think that that maybe then there'd be a discussion about whether or not to amend the bylaw to. Give further protection to the lighting at Choate, but that's, that's a discussion for another day, I don't think we have to have it tonight.
Okay.
Who made a motion?
I made it, you seconded it.
All right, it was seconded, the discussion was had, any further discussion? No, Ms. Brascio.
Hi.
Ms. Malanowski.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Mr. Healy is I. All right, um, thank you, folks. I hope this was helpful, but you've got the Board of Selectmen support, so hopefully that's helpful.
The Board of Selectmen's support and twenty five cents will get you a phone call.
I just wanted to let you know too, that we are talking about this at our planning board meeting on the twenty sixth. So um, our plan will be to have some of these resolutions too, so we'll have that updated language that night, in case anybody wants to attend.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, what are we on now, site plan review?
I I held that one.
Yep.
This is our constructor, um constructive approval issue. And again, my point continues to be, I think uh having ninety days for the planning board to make a decision here. And then um uh having after that point um constructive approval apply. Given the tightening up of the timeline where the complete application has to be present to start the clock versus today where an incomplete application can start the clock. If the town clerk accepts filing from somebody. I think gives the planning board sufficient time, plus the possibility of agreement with the applicant to extend that timeline. Seems to me very reasonable and provide some assurance for an applicant that there is a time limit on the process. So that, to me, is a fairly simple change, replacing the uh the two sixties with the ninety and restoring the clause that's stricken about constructive approval.
Ms. Brascio or Ms. Malanowski, any thoughts? No? Okay, I, Sam, I agree with you. Um, I I think the the position that I've heard the town planner take is that, well, you can always get it extended. Because the planning board and the applicant can agree to extend it. The problem is, that puts all the power with the planning board, and it takes it away from the applicant. Um, and I just think that that that's such an easy fix, whatever your number is, whether it's, whether it's the sixty days or the ninety days. It 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 accomplishes what the planning board says they want to accomplish, which is to give them ample time to do the review. But it also doesn't completely disempower, making up words here, the uh the applicant and leave him or her hanging. If they don't want to agree to the extension.
And the other point that the playing uh town planner made was that the town council. Provide an opinion, which I guess I would qualify as a policy decision, not a legal opinion. He said that the uh the removal of constructive approval uh is an advantage for the planning board.
Sam, I see Sarah there, Sarah, you, do you want to weigh in on this? Do you understand our point, by the way?
Yes, yes, and yes, um, I do. The uh, you know, Mimi is uh, you know, going to be representing this particular warrant article at town meeting. And she has done uh some investigation into uh the provisional um clause in other towns. And she's distributed that to the planning board, and so at the meeting on the twenty sixth, that will be a significant part of the discussion in terms of comparing. Southborough to other surrounding towns and what they're doing, and you know, many of them do have that clause. At, you know, either ninety days or a hundred and twenty days or such. So I think that that will be a large part of the discussion on the twenty sixth.
Okay.
I'll look forward to watching that then.
So what do we want to do, Sarah, thank you very much, do we want to hold this for town meeting to see what they're gonna do, or?
Let's do town meeting.
Folks are comfortable with that, okay. And and Sarah, that doesn't mean, I I think generally there is support for the approach and to move it to the planning board. It just, again, and and Sam and I are the ones who've who've expressed it, but but it just. It seems like there's an easy way to satisfy what the planning board wants here, which is ample time, but also protect the applicant. Okay?
And and Marty, I would add that this this bylaw uh change actually does a lot of good things, certainly. So I don't want to lose the the fact that uh this is a very helpful change overall. With, in my view, at least, there's one exception here, so.
Okay, all right, um, so thirty six is is A T M, Mark. And thank you, Sarah. Are we down to thirty seven, the noise bylaw?
Yep.
Is there any discussion about that?
I got a comment.
Okay.
I heard at an advisory meeting that Mr. Lapine actually has some modifications to this that he plans to uh. Propose at town meeting, I remain interested in seeing what those are, I have some concerns about it as it's currently written as far as the. Impact on both homeowners and landscape businesses. And I'm I'm a big fan of noise bylaws generally, but I think it needs to balance the interests of residents and and. Particular landscapers. And I think that could be done with some fairly simple modifications to this, but I've not spoken with Mr. Lapine, not seen what his proposed changes are, so. I remain interested in seeing that, and I guess my theory is, let's wheel town meeting on this one when we see the specific proposal.
Not sure, or Ms. Malanowski?
Yes, please, so I think all, because it's a citizen's petition, the position we have to take for town meeting. Is based on what's written in the warrant, Mark, am I incorrect in? My interpretation that whether an amendment is is made at town meeting. I I'm certainly in favor of, I I agree, Sam, I think that there needs to be something, I don't think this is it, what's as it's currently written. So I currently don't support what's written in the um, the warrant. So I I would be in favor of taking a position on this tonight, I don't think I I need to wait till town meeting, we certainly can change our position at town meeting. But I think that the vote for tonight is what's written in the warrant.
Chelsea?
Yeah, so, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
No, okay, I, just to, just because I was invited. So uh, the, Ms. Braccio is correct, I mean, you're taking a position on the article as you have it before you. Obviously, at town meeting, if Mr. Lapine puts an amendment on the floor. Um, I believe the moderator is going to ask for the selectman and advisory's opinion again, so you would have a chance to to offer your opinion again at that time.
Thank you.
The bylaw as amended, okay. Chelsea, you have?
Um, the only thing I was gonna say was, I did watch uh Mr. Lapine at advisory. And I have some concerns um on what he presented, so I would not be in favor of this.
All right, I I will move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty seven, the citizen petition noise bylaw.
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Stivers, any further discussion? No, Ms. Brascio.
Nay.
Ms. Malanowski.
Nay.
Mr. Stivers.
No.
And Mr. Healy is no, so the Board of Selectmen do not support the noise bylaw. Uh, Mark, do we need to take a vote on thirty eight because it had, because the procedural stuff hasn't been accomplished yet?
I I would simply leave it at at town meeting.
Okay.
Procedure isn't done, assumably, Mr. Weishen is going to indefinitely postpone the meeting, he can explain why.
Okay, so we down to our last one?
Last one.
Flag road truck exclusion, this is, it's, do we do, do we take a position on this? Because this is to strongly recommend to us. Right? So, should we just take no position on whether or not we should have someone strongly recommend to us, or do folks feel differently?
You know, Marty. I I don't disagree with you and and but, Miss, has Mr. Linden been invited, Mark, to come to a meeting? And present what it is he's trying to do and and the reasons why?
I I would have to go back and see if if um. If he has been, I believe that all sponsors were invited, um, but it's not saying that it may not be worth inviting him again. Um, I do think that um, you know, Ms. Gallagher, you know, does have some information. Um, and you know, I'll be encouraging her to reach out to Mr. Linden, you know, to try to um explain where the town has been at, what the town has done informally. In terms of what he's looking for for this truck exclusion. Um, and that may, that understanding may help to temper or or resolve this article completely.
Okay.
As you know, he's not spoken with Ms. Gallagher.
I I I don't believe so, I've been, Ms. Gallagher and I have been playing phone tag, uh, so um. I do, you know, but but I I don't know that she's spoken with him, no.
I mean, I'm certainly interested in the possibility of a flag road truck exclusion, but I'm not eager to. but I'm not eager to waste money on something if we have to do a traffic study that we've already done previously, and the answer is abundantly clear. And that seems to me to be a poor use of taxpayer money.
Again, I'm just looking again at the at the at the language of the bylaw of the of the article. It's to see if the town will vote to strongly request that the Board of Selectmen do something. It just, that seems like an odd thing for us to take a position on. Yes, we think you should strongly direct that we do something. But I'm, I guess my view would be that we take no position on whether or not the town does that for us. That'd be, that's where I'm most comfortable.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And suggest Ms. Gallagher follow up with
Yeah, and I'm happy to have him come in and talk with us about it. More generally, I mean, independent of this, if he could convince us that it made sense and and it wasn't a waste of money and Karen had thoughts on it. But I, again, it just seems odd for us to take a position on whether or not something should be recommended to us. So okay, so we're done.
Okay.
Let me pull up my agenda. So as I told Mr. Purple, as I was, I was walking with my dog along the Jersey Shore today, I am in fact in New Jersey and am for another couple of weeks. So my signature will not be on the warrant. And I made sure, I made sure that, I'm sorry, what's in?
Resolving all responsibilities.
That's right. I made sure that I told them that it could be FedEx back and forth if it if it were critical. But but, you know, four out of five is fine. So once again, my signature is meaningless. So but but you all, Mark, you'll make arrangements for folks to get their signatures on that?
Yeah, I will take care of that in the next day or so.
Okay. Anything else on either the recommendations or the signing of the final warrant? No, we are on to final public comment. Going once, going twice. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Malinowski, Ms. Bracio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Styvers, it's confusing with Mr. Shane out here. Mr. Styvers?
I'll vote for Shay. He's aye, too.
And Mr. Healy is aye. And Lisa, sorry. So we're unanimous to adjourn, but it was two hours and 12 minutes.
I was close. That's all right.
All right, see you next week, then on Tuesday morning, right, for a very quick meeting?
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye bye.